I think we need one of the new drawers.
One, one, one.
The laptop.
Hi, hi, hi.
Yeah, I think. You can use that laptop.
Is it that one?
Okay. Sounds right.
Sounds right, it's, can't hear it. Wow.
Well, there's nobody on the other side of the line who we can ask to test this, so we're just assuming that.
We need to be live.
Okay, so everybody, welcome to this full council meeting. And. We start by asking whether there are any apologies for assets. As we have apologies for the council of Commons and council of England. Are we happy to accept those apologies?
Yes, we are.
Yes. Wonderful. Then the usual thing, are there any declarations of interest that we probably already know about? Pertain to this then, no? We then now have minutes to approve, so to agree as per record, the minutes of the annual statutory meeting and the meeting of the full council held on 7th of May 2024. Happy to receive those as correct, yeah?
Yeah.
We also have then to agree as correct the minutes of the interim council held on 22nd of April. Great. Yeah, we're happy with that, good. Then to receive the minutes of the planning committee meetings held on 22nd of April and 20th of May.
Thank you, Mayor, I present both of those minutes. Thank you, Mayor.
Happy to offer to a great and terrific post.
Yeah.
Council and events committee, minutes of meeting held on the 8th of April.
Present the minutes to note, um, there's 7.735243. What was proposed that we remember for council, the amount of events that we're now putting on for young people and children. Bear that in mind the next year, second by council. On, um, the precept to note that it is because it is quite prevalent that how many children have attended these events. I know, um, councillor Margaret Gayley has been at lots of these events, um, working it out, and it's very much needed now. Um, with the planet that we've got and that, of course, we will be doing. Um, the playdate, um, is part coming in the weekend, um, in the school holidays, which is very much needed and they are so well attended, it's unbelievable. Um, and it's odd to me, something we do is just to note to bear in mind as members when we are looking at the precept. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, are we happy to note this?
Yeah. Not limited.
Thank you. Environment committee, the minutes of the meeting held on 15th of April.
I present the minutes of the meeting on the 15th of April.
Are we happy to receive them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then the minutes of the resources committee meeting held on 4th of March.
As you've said, Mayor, I'm happy to present the minutes.
Are we happy to receive them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item nine, let's see enough quickly, we can sort of know where. To formally agree the bank signatories as councillor shape or councillor poll, councillor Donahue, councillor Sachbury, councillor Davies and to agree the signing schedule. For anybody asking the question why these councillors, they are the chairs of the major committees. And that. And the demand. Bridge, yeah?
Great, great.
Great. Okay, thank you. We then have a, agenda item number 10. A report from the town clerk and estates manager. So we have the report in writing there and it is recommended that we note the updates to the new cemetery project. And to recommend to Christie, I will ask Lee to, Lee, do you want to say a little bit about before we go into the recommendations?
We must, I guess, give a further update to the report, of course. Uh, since writing the report, uh, initial approval in principle, um, for drainage. Um, so I've had three, a lot of discussions about the final item on the planning, detail planning. Um, we have, we have had that, um, initial approval, so, but the sixth edition look to meet. And I'll be meeting with our design and engineer, engineers in the coming week to sort that out, so. Know this, that, all right.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Councillor Sachbury?
Yeah, just to thank these things at 10 o'clock in their absence, but they've done on this. Um, this is a major project that we've all been working on for a very long time and it isn't, um, in its taking, its time, well, that's just because the way things are, but we must thank them, I'm happy to propose to agree them, and propose them.
Just second that, yeah, and are we, uh, taking them all, get all three of them together?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's been proposed and seconded, all those in favour please? And that is unanimous, thank you very much. We have a motion from councillor Howard Mordu. Do you wish to speak to it?
I don't wish to speak to it yet, I'll speak at the end, I wish to move the motion so it can be debated. I'll just say it was postponed from the last council meeting because of the concerns as per. I've checked that out with Democratic Services, it was not. There is no political significance in that motion, it is only part of the normal council business. Um, however, the county town, the town clerk has done a report, she's also been considered tonight.
Okay, thank you, councillor Davies.
I think councillor, I think it was a major question.
Yes, I've used them to support that motion, um, and I haven't sort of read the town clerk's report. Um, I guess that would present it before we then discuss it, or what's the, what we're taking, but I'd like to also speak up.
We do need to discuss the elements of the report. And councillor Davies.
Thank you, Mayor, um, just to say, um, that I, I support the, um, the motion. Um, and I'm glad now that we've got, um, further information in front of us, which we didn't have when we previously looked at this. Um, that we've now got the reports. Um, so are party to all the information that, um, might be, um, relevant, thank you.
Councillor Mordu?
Thank you, um, I can't, David's stole my thumb duck, I was like, exactly same thing. It wasn't, it wasn't just, it was, we were going to try to do it, it was that we didn't have a report, we had nothing to read and nothing to discuss. So I'm happy to, to support the motion as well.
Thank you, councillor Harvey.
Yeah, I guess a couple of points from me, one is, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that this could end up being a uh, a resource commitment from the town council, I appreciated it in the report saying it could go either way, but I think we have to be mindful of that. Um, secondly, I think, I'm just wondering whether there's any provisions in the previous agreements when the land was originally built upon back in 78, whether those provisions can be made to apply to the current landlord. Um, again, I don't know whether that's possible, that I hope would be part of the exploration, this would involve. Um, and thirdly, I would just add though, that the issue about Perla, I hear what you say, how, um, I think it just shows again just how assiduous our officers are in making sure that our town council followed Perla rules assiduously. And we are not political town council and our officers maybe always keep us in check about that, particularly during Perla. And I think it's really important to state that on the record, that our officers are absolutely squeaking on this. That should be known by the public.
Thank you. Councillor Sachbury?
Yeah, I'm pretty still quite happy with the, but I'm very grateful to have a report, as councillor Donny said, uh, now have something to actually discuss around it rather than a theoretical proposal. There are some aspects within the report we ought to be minded to. All we agree is that there isn't a cost, and we haven't got a cost or budget heading to actually do this. And it does state that there may be some legal costs in it, so we agreed it, if we agree it, we are agreeing it with a blank cheque. Um, that may be something we're happy to do, but there are some aspects around there about the finance. It also states within the report that we can go through this entire exercise and get this done with consent or not consent. Um, but that still doesn't give us the legal, if the landowner doesn't wish to cooperate. That also leaves us with the aspect of who would maintain there after Buckinghamshire Council or um, the town council, which would then need to be precepted for. Well, we aren't in a precepting position at the moment, so hopefully those things would become apparent to us by the end of the financial year if there was to be a cost. But we haven't got a cost in this, in this report of what the legal aspect to be, um, because it did state there was some legal um, elements around it, which might need to be seen some, or do that outside. But the principle of it is the right thing to try and resolve the issue, I fear, having read, um, the director's email where, at the onset of this, um, the director of Buckinghamshire Council clearly stated that there was some issues around the, the insurance of it and why Buckinghamshire would maintain it, because it belonged to them. I think we have to be minded to all those things in here, I mean, I have to be very careful because we do not have to, um, this is the beginning of the, of the, of the solution, not the end of the solution, and we must be very careful in our wording on this, we don't give false um, hope where there may in the end not be a resolution. Nothing's worse than disappointing those residents who affect this problem, and anyone who's been out in the past few weeks probably knows, um, chapter and verse what those problems are. But the principle is right, we agree in the motion now with the report is the right way to go, um, as councillor Harvey said, we must thank our officers for their legal prowess. Their due diligence and proper way that they act in the interest of the community. Because we couldn't easily have just agreed something on spec and we have something before us, so thank the office now, like it reported in the minutes that we are grateful for the report, but I have no objections to the report, just citing things that never started, which are in the report, those concerns that we must be minded to if and when councillor agrees this tonight.
And councillor Davies.
Yes, thank you, I mean, in principle, I, I would, I support the, um, underlying issues that have caused this motion to be brought, because it's been ongoing issues, hasn't it, for a lot of years? And very difficult for the people who live very close by. Um, just a little bit concerned that if we were almost, um, ruffling feathers by almost provoking the landowner to react if we do take this forward. And I hope we wouldn't end up in a worse position than we are already, or maybe that's not possible, because this has been a thorn in, in the side of Buckingham for such a long while. Just slightly uneasy about the process and what might come out of it.
I may abuse chairs pretty much here, I personally feel a reaction from the landlord wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing to prove they actually exist and respond to something that we do. So that's, there's that consideration, councillor Gray.
Um, it'd be pretty interesting reading the court report, because as I said, the issue that the residents living in village have is not necessarily worrying about that area being developed and seeing that all the protection will there sort of being developed and it's been coming out of the room and and also, um, within the native plan, but the issue they have is around the maintenance of it, and as I said, if we did register the land and the property, because it's privately owned, that wouldn't necessarily and I can see how she can say, I'm not saying that it's a bad idea, I said that you know.
That's true, that's true, I'm trying to be.
Oh, no, I didn't mean it.
Um, while I do think that it's worth trying, because if we the worst, what has happened, I think, is nothing happens. And we're still in the same situation, but we've used up resources and got us a time and potential finances. The best thing that can happen is that they say, yeah, fine, I'm, I'm, I'm done with it, I'm tired, yeah, just, just do what you want, as long as I still get to keep on with it. Um, my, my feeling would be about timing possibly, because obviously with the officers doing the, we're pushing through the naked plan, I know that time is very limited at the moment, so potentially would depend on what everyone else thinks. You can maybe say, yes, we're pushing through with it, but after the native plan has kind of been completed and however, most of it's, it's very much.
Thank you, councillor Jane Mordu. Yeah, thank you very much, um. I was talking to a young mother who, uh, lives on Linden Village. And she tells me that at the moment, there's an old gentleman, now, when she says old, I don't know, she put me somewhere in their 50s or 60s, a young woman. Um, and he's taken his domestic lawnmower out and cutting the grass on, on that area so that the children can go and play there. I've, I've actually went and had a look at it and there's some, yeah, it's got, it's got, it's patches. The children are worried about it, they can hear scurrying noises in the grass, you know, they think it's rats, I think it might be snakes, anyway. It's like, yeah, so the people in Buckingham, and I hear all the legalistic, I, I always see the emotion about wanting to get something done. It sounds as if we've been trying, it sounds as if, uh, we are now just about to move forward on it. I think we just, it sounds that we need that extra bit of help from legal advice from Buckinghamshire Council or wherever to make, to make this actually happen, because this has been going on a long time. And I know, uh, councillor Davies and the environment committee have been labouring over it long and hard, and I know that everyone around the table wants something to happen. This might just be the way forward.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Councillor Davies.
Thank you, um. In terms of, um, maintain, maintaining it, even if we did get village green status on it. Um, I don't think we're, we're, we're still in that same country as far as I can make out. Um, unless I've missed something in, in the reports, um, who would, who would then be responsible for the, for the maintenance of it?
Councillor Osibogan and then.
To put the response about, um, whilst we originally had to come on land, right, we'll then need to get access to the land and maintain the land. But it's all creating an obligation on the council to maintain them. So also gives us the ability to go on there to maintain, to, to maintain it, it doesn't create that obligation on us as a council to maintain it. Right, so that's, that was a slight difference there.
No, we're not still the same.
No, we're not, so by creating obligation on us to maintain it means that if we do not maintain it, then we have done something wrong. Or if we cannot have an obligation to maintain it, if we are on it as common land to maintain it, then we've done us a big duty, does that, does that application help?
I think I'm, I think I'm getting what you're trying to say, yeah.
Can I, can I, yeah, come back on that, that, that was what I was trying to get at, we've we would still, there would still not be anybody that had an obligation to maintain that land, that's, that was, that was what I was trying to get at. So we're still in the, that same situation. But we, no, nobody has then, um, nobody has then got to maintain that land still, and, um, we are looking at, as a town council, um, as Margaret, I think quite rightly said, um, to do something with it. Are we not then, um, setting ourselves up with additional costs? Yeah, in order to do so, that was.
I'll, I'll come back to the, the relevant part of the report, but I like councillor Mordu.
Thank you, Mayor, Steve. The land has been, been maintained for as long as I've been living in Linden Village since 1991. It was done voice to have two cuts by Buckinghamshire Council, then ADTC. And we, as BTC, did two cuts a year, so it has been maintained, the grass was kept low and children could still play uh, and use it as a recreational land, so I don't see what the issue, if you've been doing it historically and, uh, through custom for such a long time. I can't see why the issue is now, it's that it can't be carried, we can't carry on.
As far as I understand, and Steve correct me if, um, if you know different or anybody else. My understanding is that when it was done by Buckinghamshire Council, it was with an agreement of the then receivers from Federated Homes, which.
It was never come up, Buckinghamshire Council, until very recently.
Until very recently, but it was done with the agreement at least of the then, then, the then landowners, which was the voice, yeah.
Uh, but we, the BTC did it because we wanted to keep.
Yeah, I know, but to finish, now that land has changed ownership, so without an agreement of the new owner, we are not legally allowed to maintain it, and that's a difference. And that was what this would give us, so just to remind everybody what it says under point five, point one of the, um, of the report that we have. And that is says precisely what councillor Osibogan has just mentioned, that the law makes no provision regarding the maintenance of privately owned greens. Therefore, unless it's specifically provided for by some other form of regulatory instrument or legal agreement, such as a scheme of regulation or enclosure of awards. There is no obligation on a landowner or any other party to actively maintain the town or village green, so that's what councillor Osibogan just said. But the next point is that a district council, unitary authority or national park authority, so in this case that would be the unitary authority. May make a scheme of regulation for a green under the Commons Act of 1899. And that would be to place the management of the green in the hands of the council or authority. That can be vetoed by the, uh, owner of the green, which is possibly very to be unlikely since I'm showing any interest in it so far. Um, so, um, yes, that may resolve the answer, and there is, there seems to me quite a little bit of vagueness in that, so I've lost count, I think councillor Gray, councillor Sachbury, councillor Harvey, in that order, I apologise if it was.
No, just, yeah, I think although there is, as you said, there's no obligation, there is also no right to maintain the land, and I think that's why we would be reliant on the unitary authority granting us permission along with the landowner consent, so that would be one sticking point if this did, yeah.
Definitely. Councillor, I've just been told that councillor Harvey was next, so.
Well, on the motion, yeah, my essence comes to make my, I don't want to get to it, but I think I'm just wondering if we're trying to, I don't know, get out of the station. In terms of what the objective is to get to a point where the grass is cut. My hunch is, is that when this process is initiated, the current landowner may well resist. Because my hunch is also, I could be wrong on this, I'm happy to record that, I am. Is if it's designated as a village green, then the value of the land would immediately drop. Which would mean that the landowner isn't going to be welcomed by the idea from the outset. And obviously we can't force it on them because they own the land, don't you, that gives them their, their, some rights. So the question is whether this is actually worthwhile, because we could be asking the town clerk and the officers to pursue a course of action that could end up being ultimately a waste of time and money and resources, particularly if we get lawyers involved. And we all know how much lawyers cost, things like this, probably so, there's a lot of detail to, to look into. Um, so I guess I'm kind of reluctant to pursue this far. I guess I'm wondering if it's possible to say the landowner, look, this is causing a real uproar. Is there some way we can sort it, arrange it with you whereby the town council perhaps takes on board the cutting of your, your permission and maybe even your resources? Whether that's the more, whether that's worth pursuing in the first instance rather than go broke and go through a village green, because they're not going to want the village green much anyway, and we can't, we can't force it on them. So that's amusing here, but I think there's complexity here, and there are resources involved in this as well, and as already been said preceding. We know, given the current arrangements, given the current legal plan, whether it's got to, is this the right time to put another load on the town clerk at work here?
Thank you, can I ask Steve and Lee, what, if any, attempts have been made so far to actually liaise with the landowner, because certainly my attempts have not produced any response, and that is what the officers at Buckinghamshire Council also tell us, you know?
We did write to the, to the company, I think regarding a particular tree, um, early on. Uh, but not, not regarding the overall processing issues.
Okay, and did you get a response in?
No response.
Okay. Thank you, I think that is worth bearing in mind, with any attempts of working with the landowner, it's going to have to get them to actually respond. Uh, councillor Sachbury?
Yeah, listen, everyone, I mean, I don't know how it shows not to speak yet, but, um, the, um, the reality is, as I said earlier, we have to be very careful with this, is we don't do an action and then do a disappointment, because the action doesn't produce what the assumptions it might produce. And in that basis, I think that this land is going to need, um, a long term resolution. And I am aware that Buckinghamshire Council and the offices and it's come, been discussed heavily in the environment committee. Not one of those has produced resolution, it was definitely brought to the next environment committee anyway. So where we go with this. Um, listening to councillor Jane Mordu about the legal aspect of this. Not delaying it, but to get a broad cost around what the legal aspect of this would be, so that when we go into this we know that it's going to cost us £2,000, we know it's going to cost us £200, we know that, so we can agree that figure based upon where we are, which would be, in my view, to agree it in principle. Um, and ask it to be moved in the environment committee with full costs and that to be ratified. Because if any decisions are going to be taken about the future maintenance of this, it seems appropriate that that's done in the environment committee. That way, we don't owe, we don't go and say, we're going to do this, and then the, the sirens go out there, the town council's going to maintain this, because there's been so much discussion about the difficulties in this. At least that allows us throughout those costs before us in a meeting, and it allows councillor Mordu's ambitions to resolve it, to be pursued with, um, with the figures, with the extra bit. And it can form part of the committee's discussions, because we do agree it tonight, we've still got to go and discuss it in the environment committee to, or if it's something back to the environment committee thereafter. If it's a cost or a maintenance issue with it, uh, in the future, it will go there. I wonder whether that's one way of answering those questions that councillor Jane Mordu mentioned about the legality of it, it's not meant to be to store it, because I worry, I worry that we might give the wrong signal, and if we do communicate that, we have to communicate the difficulties that are within the report, and as councillor Adie said about those legal difficulties he cited, which I'm grateful for, around the ambiguities in it, um, so, but we don't give the impression that this is going to solve it in one false word, because people are fractious, upset and, um, and want a resolution. So I don't know quite whether we do that, I mean, I don't know what councillor, what he's going to speak next feels like, that I'll be, that's. Um, um, proposing a motion, um, because otherwise, um, we could just give people a wrong impression, I worry about that, because then we were further down the road, they've been asked, you told us you were going to do something and you haven't done it. And that's because the report tells us how difficult it's going to be, so I think that's the worry, what it is, we're just making sure that we can actually do what I believe everyone in this council would want to see, which is the proposal and the sector's ambition, if they resolve the issue. And I think that's what their intentions are in the long term. So I don't know whether, I'd be interested to know what the proposer thought about that, um, because it could be that he disagrees with it or accepts the principle of that. Um, I listened carefully to councillor Mordu's, Miss Mordu about the cost of it, and I think she raised a base point.
If I may, in myself, I live on Linden Village, so I should probably declare that I live on Linden Village.
So do I.
And, um, I think the bit, no, I'm not mentioning that, but the bit that upsets people the most is actually the green or red trail coast. And I wouldn't be affected by this, so, um, that may have to be a question that's resolved privately, that's a difference. That may have to be a question that's resolved privately. That's a different story. But um we think we need, I think we need to be very clear that. If we decide on this, and it actually works beautifully, which is, there is no guarantee that it would work beautifully or smoothly, but say it did. Then that still would only address the green on the edge of March, March Edge. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anyway, that bit down there by the river. The only other possibility or advantage that I could see, but this is rather speculative. That because it would reduce the value of the land very swiftly, which. Which councillor Harvey's, of course, entirely right, it might bring the landlord out of the woodworks, which in itself wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing, I think. But to object to it, because they don't want the value depreciated. But if it did it, it might encourage them to. I don't want to speculate it, but they might want to take actions with respect to their future ownership of it, which could then open the avenue for. Other possibilities. I don't want to put it in a polling meeting. I don't want to speculate more than this. But this is very speculative. This is just a. A hope that we might have. So we might want to bear this hope in mind, but also knowing that this is even less certain than. All the steps that were to come before it. Councillor, pardon you. Councillor, you go next.
Um so councillor, Mrs. Mordu, um her suggestion was to ask legal at the Shire Council. I was just wondering, is that possible? Can we, can we do that? Can we ask their legal department about this? To get advice, possibly.
I'm not clear on the number workings of box in that respect, but I notice you've already kind of asked.
Yeah.
Whether they will agree to give advice where they might even go further down the line, if none of that's actually.
Yeah, okay. That wasn't stopping you from speaking up again later, but I think you had a response to that.
Well, if you wish, I can answer some of the questions now.
Yeah.
We might clear. But Fran, do you want to go first?
Can I, can I just say, thank you? Um. I fully, fully think that we we need to put as many protections onto all these green spaces as we possibly can. Um. We need to do that without exposing ourselves as a council to um. Um future. Um costs which would possibly be out of our control. However. Councillor Harvey's point that um having green space. Um or village green um. On on these pieces of land or this piece of land um would reduce the value of it. The value of this land is only what somebody is willing to pay for it. And. It was, it was the view of this council, I think, if I remember correctly. That the developer that um that has bought these these parcels of land paid way over the odds for them. Um. Why they did did so, we've no idea. I don't believe that 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 land is worth anything like what they paid for it. So maybe we're just revaluing it back to what it what it originally should have been. What else?
Yeah. And anyone else who can? Yeah, councillor Harvey.
I'm I love doing this ahead of power, but he's keeping his palate dry at the moment. And that's fine. That's okay, of course. Um but I would add that as an amendment to the motion. And I would suggest that at the end of the motion, if this kind of draft, we also then add. And that the town and club pursue this process within the precepted resources currently available to her. Within the scrutiny of the environment committee. So that's what I would propose. So rather than words depending around a white chest, you can't be going into that.
Hmm.
Any any time at all. Specifically not right now with the labour plan. Crashing at our edges, as it were. So I'll read that out again. And that the town will pursue this process. Within the precepted resources currently available to her, within the scrutiny of the environment committee. I'm proposing that as an amendment to the motion.
Councillor, my second one, please. Yeah, now we're close.
Well, don't accept that. Let's actually accept the motion. I'll tell you why. Um we go back in history. It's over thirty years ago. But that land was, came up, planning application, it was refused. And it's been. Open land ever since, which pig use for recreational purposes. And in the planning refusal, it stated that it's the only piece of open land within. Of of a side of the middle of the village. It wasn't maintained by the receivers when the company federated homes went into receivership. However, receivers can only maintain land for anything for the benefit of the creditors or the companies. Um but as there was no way of getting the money back, A B C did agrees to cut the grass. Not just on our edge, but throughout the village, which we should have done, as we know. When Buckinghamshire Council took over. They back in agreement, went to new contractors eventually. Originally, they just cut what was being cut by A B C. They appointed new contractors who were needed for digital mapping. And digital mapping threw out the fact that Buckinghamshire Council didn't own it. And Buckinghamshire Council, the contractors said they could only. Cut the grass and land which Buckinghamshire Council owns. So they refused to cut it. And that's when we hit this down there. And of course, it was twenty twenty three, I think, when the the land was sold. By auction. By the receivers of federated homes. You saw how much the administrators racked up. The hundred and twenty five thousand that was paid for that is peanuts. Um but the new owners of Blue Sky Properties have various companies, including. Um one in Gibraltar, for instance. And trying to get any reply from them is impossible. They don't reply to emails, letters, or anything. Now, the only piece of valuable land, I think, as somebody said, could be March Edge. The rest of it tend to be, you know, landlocked pieces which aren't maintained now. But I saw some have, household can maintain it themselves. But once again, if you need to land like that, you would need someone with a grass cutter. And. We, Buckinghamshire Council could do it, but they don't have to do it. Buckingham Town Council, Town Council could do it, but they don't have to. If it's registered as common land. Apart from getting shit and ghosts and pigs and graze, which we're not going to, you're. Um it would maintain it as a public recreational space, if you like. That's the modern way of looking at it. Um. I feel, as somebody said, that that's the most significant piece of land. Most valuable piece of land. And I think there were. Uh with nineteen houses, so we should have.
Five and five.
Yeah. And that was in the refuse in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety one. Uh so if you do take that out of the the equation. Maybe, or maybe not. It would lower the package of land, because in the original auction agreement, it did include bits of bypass in that agreement, which. Is a bit ridiculous really, but it did. Now, as far as the implications for the town council go, I'm not asking that they do the work. For registering the land, that they can't. It's up to the unitary council to actually write to the owner. And it's up to the unitary council to register it. The town council has no power. Now, whether the Buckinghamshire Unitary come back and say, you want us to do his X pounds, but they've done other bits of land with any problem. The most important thing is that any land has to be proved. To be used for recreational purposes for twenty years. And we've got category proof that's been like that for thirty four years, probably, I think. Yeah. Um so there, there is no. Black hole of financial commitment, as far as I can see, in asking Buckinghamshire Council. To register. All they do is go through the process and and they must try and get hold of landlords, or the owners, rather. And make every attempt to maintain that land for the profit of good. It doesn't mean say they have to mow it. There's no obligation on anyone to mow their grass. However, it does give the ability for either Buckinghamshire Council. Or Buckingham Town Council to maintain that piece of land. For the interests of recreational purposes or the public good of residents of Linden Village. And that's what I am asking. And I'm very pleased that the town council uh support me in that we write to. Buckinghamshire Council, ask him to register. It does, it's not a quick process. You you don't just write to them and they've done the job and that's it. There is a process to be gone through. And they do have to write to the last known address of the owners. And wait for a response and probably has to do a checkup on that. It won't affect the neighbour development plan because that is. All encompassing about development. The one thing the Act two thousand and six said was you cannot use the right of it. Uh establishing a common land to frustrate development. And that's why it came in. Because there were times when people would use the registration of common land to prevent a development. And so we're not doing that. We're not saying that it can't be developed. We know it can't be developed because of planning. Anyway, I I I agree. As somebody said, there is enough weight there to prevent development. However. It doesn't stop any developer or any person. Spectacular, the main commission to start development on that land. It's highly unlikely we're going to get a commission now. But registering as common land, maintaining it, it doesn't impose any legislation burden on anyone to actually maintain it. But you can do, but certainly Buckinghamshire Council will not do at the moment. And I would think Buckingham Town Council might have a problem if they were to go and cut it. Because they're trespassing at the moment if they do it.
Yeah.
And if you're trespassing on somebody's property, you can be liable.
Hmm.
Um open space is a figure of speech. An open space can be fenced. And allow access, it still can be fenced. And having this common land would prevent that. So that's why I say it's no point in going to a bond. We're at a stage where we, this motion is that we write to. The unitary council. They may say no, in which case, I want to say what I was going to say. Uh. No, that's the end of it. However, it's the beginning of the end. Uh my hope is that if we get this established. We can get some kind council. To actually make, cut the grass there. And we can, again, this has been set by the mayor. Perhaps get the current owners to talk about the rest of the bits of pieces and come to an understanding. At the moment, we've got a hundred and twenty five thousand tied up in the purchase of the land, which is not a huge amount of money for them. But it's a significant amount of money, which isn't going to go anywhere if your main piece of land is out of the equation. So that's why I ask for this motion to go before Buckinghamshire Council to see if we can register this as common land. And that will benefit all over residents in Linden Village, bending. Mayor's ears and hours in the land not being maintained. So I think, do you want to ask me a question? Because I can maintain standing.
I was just checking that, and now that there's been a better explanation.
Yeah.
Sorry, second you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I think we need to take this, I wonder, but yeah, I think that's been quite helpful. I have questions to councillor Mordu.
Just one, no, I'm, thank you because you clarified it already. Can I just make absolutely sure? So the motion. Because I think I overcomplicated it in my head a little bit, as far as a little bit of assistance would be able to make. All we, all our officers will need to do is write a letter, spot in your council.
And fill out a form.
And fill out a form and ask for their machine records.
And send a copy of the land. That's be very specific in the area of land you're referring to. It's not just good.
That bit over there.
Android. Be very specific in what you want to register common land.
Thanks.
So I think we're also quite capable of that.
Yeah. So to clarify, there is a certain amount of paper paperwork to do, but that is in order to request that the Buckinghamshire Council. But uh start the process of registering the land. That is what the motion actually is.
Yeah, I I don't, I can't promise you that something may not happen further down the line.
Hmm.
Because, you know, we don't know about these things. But from my understanding of the process, it's fairly straightforward in registering it as common land. It's, it doesn't require a huge amount of legal cost. Um there is a register kept in London of all common lands throughout the country, and it'll be on that as registered common land. Uh but it's up to the unitary authority to actually get it registered. And there's a process that has to go through, right into the owners. Uh I think it was right into, being sure of the evidence that it'd been twenty years.
Hmm.
That it's been used for recreational purposes. So they may write to. Uh neighbouring households to ascertain that. So everybody's happy, all sit down.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Harvey.
Um thank you, councillor Mordu, for that explanation. Um it's very helpful. I guess my response is that isn't what the motion says. And I think we should be precise about what the motion says before we pass it. Um because at the moment, the way the motion is phrased, the agent in the motion is us, the town council. And it says it's registered by Buckingham Town Council. That that puts a uh a responsibility on us to do the registering.
Yeah.
And that isn't what you're saying, and that's fine. It actually says with. Yeah, but the agent mentioned is us, because we're the first party.
Hmm.
Shire Council is the second party, and that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, particularly. So I'm I'm agreeing with you. Yeah, I can finish, councillor Mordu. I just think we need to make it more precise.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I'm going to suggest, and I withdraw the previous amendment, by the way, because obviously that doesn't make sense. And what I'm going to suggest is this council requests Buckinghamshire Council. To pursue a process whereby that the land of um March Edge, hang on, let's sit down.
I'm into a mission.
Hang on a second, bear with me.
Yeah.
Um that the land of March Edge. Um is registered as common land. So leave out any mentions of council at that point. Is registered as common land under section fifty one application, blah, 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 blah. So the words. It 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 simply, the motion says, what you said we want to do.
Hmm.
Is that we simply ask them to do it.
Hmm.
Leaving out us as agents in this or as actors in this, that might come later, but we can discuss that later. But right now, what you want. The motion doesn't say that. I think the motion should say that. So that's what I'm proposing as a matter of.
May I come in and say, like, just a tiny little thing there? Would you be happy to amend that yourself to as that. Buckingham Town Council makes a formal request of Buckinghamshire Council to register the land of March Edge as.
Yeah.
Common land under section fifteen point one.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine, mate.
Yeah.
But that, because I think we're all agreed, that's a good way to go, but let's make the motion say that.
Hmm.
That's fine with me, buzzing.
I'll second that.
So I don't know whether there will be a fee to do that, but the current budget agreed if that will affect.
Yeah.
Definitely not with that amount.
Contingencies.
Yeah, contingencies. We, I'm assuming that if there is a fee with Buckingham, that if Buckinghamshire Council were to impose a fee on that, that this would be. Not enormous, but I uh do we.
I think it's dangerous to assume anything.
It's dangerous to assume. Yeah, yeah, it's a great.
Well, firstly, no, thank councillor Mordu for his clarity. Thank him. Go on, Chris. Um and I think it would ask for both of it. We could vote, because there is a cost that has to come back anyway, you agree that expenditure, so we don't need to discuss.
There's no people dying.
No, I know. He says that if it ever happens to be a costly, it'll have to come back anyway.
Yeah.
I think, and I think with the amendment with us, I propose we move to the vote.
So we've got a proposal, and I think we're going to second that with. So that amendment, are we? Uh can you, can you read it out now? I was agreed to be fuller. Um. Buckingham Town Council makes a formal request of Buckinghamshire Council to issue a process. Buckingham Town Council makes a formal request of Buckinghamshire Council to pursue a process whereby the land of March Edge is registered as common land under section fifteen point one, application of the Act two thousand and six. Yes, all those in favour, please, and that is unanimous.
Okay, so you know, it's a bit accepted, so yeah, yeah, got it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we've done that, and once we need to vote formally on the motion, as.
No, it's been accepted.
Yeah, it's accepted, so I think, yes, we have. We've amended it and we've accepted the amendment, yeah, motion, okay. I think that is, formality is all all clear there. Thank you all for a very constructive discussion there. Okay, uh, I'm involved, we receive a question report from Buckinghamshire Council councillors. I was, um, who saw a report made, there wasn't an awful lot that happened in the last two years. Yes, that is a great.
Might just say that, um, there's Cabinet and, um, and I should be attending and, um, I have submitted a question, I believe it's been agreed now on the item on the agenda, which is to do with the library changes. Um, anybody who's submitted questions to Cabinet, which is too few, have to mention. Um, that's a process to go into also, um, just to point out that the there's been a long absence for a reason, I don't know why, of meeting, really, um, that will probably receive forever and, um, and we will be attended a fire card from this week and then, um, help me straighten with my findings this following week, the whip point there will be used actually for and I'm sure from every colleague, but, um, um, council now receives basis. Now the, um, London's done business.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Ossie, but I'm counsel Maudie and my, and I also haven't seen the report because, as you just said, nothing like this happened.
I don't know why.
Yeah, for some reason or another. Excellent, so. Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, I, um.
Um, except that, uh, done things that what council should do, I've cleared somebody's path. I've done some siding work, the grass was cut, I hadn't bothered to cut. And I still carry on playing with the planning, uh, informal planning and all planning. All the planning meetings of Buckinghamshire Council, um, there's still work goes on behind the scenes to uh, as far as there is and goes on planning matters. Oh, yeah, I suppose I should say I'm looking forward to another full workload of, I'm feeling anxious with.
Thank you.
I might say you then.
In that case, are we okay to move on to the next agenda? Yeah, no, I don't think we need to vote on that one. So the next item is library flex to receive the reports from the town clerk. And, um, wishes to speak on this. Counselor Stachbury.
Yeah, I'm misfortunate or unfortunate to be at the Cabinet when this was proposed, um. You will be aware that it's, uh, we've got a five hundred thousand pounds in the budget, which approached to thirty hours and so it's quite a radical change for the libraries, um, the report, um, was went for the Cabinet meeting, previous Cabinet meeting, and, uh, there was some discussion around the impact assessment and short discussions around it, but there are some radical changes in this and, um, some of the things that I am naturally concerned about are the usage of it thereafter, the idea of it being, um, big consultation and our such and such, but there are some real questions about this because you will all be aware that, um, that the formation under the Shadow Authority, I sat on the Shadow Authority, um, as a member, um, they were saying about the libraries being hubs, delivering services, putting stuff out to the community and how great this was going to be, and we're going to deliver stuff. There isn't a set, I believe there's huge difference between a change to our library, there is a change to a library in a large, large town, because they've got, um, council offices that they can go to and they can visit. And, and they can go into the gateway if you're in our free and you can go into the Wickham Office in Wickham and other places. We haven't got that in Buckingham, we've just got our library. And the staff are tremendous, they deal with, they everything from housing to blue badges to citing people towards them, but choice, helping people back and answer questions, providing telephone service to people. What will happen with this, I believe, um, it will then get, that work will then have to be pushed to the volume thing because the idea that people who are not computer literate literate, or there's nothing in the report that says that people aren't literate, who can't read and write. And as a dyslexic, I am concerned about those people. Um, so I think this, um, cost cutting, um, uh, or savings, this is the word used nowadays. Could have all been avoided, um, if they had accepted the amendment, um, to the budget for council. And the but reset which provided them with an extra one point five million pounds, um, into the office, which was turned down. And it could have been amended and they could have agreed that and they could have used that money to offset any choreo costs that they wanted to. That was, um, um, voted down and it was to, um, introduce in line with the previous government's local level in Upfield, which was to, um, have the ability to do full taxation on, um, second homes. But we aren't there. I worry that people come in on the buses, the buses only run to a certain timetable. Anyone who knows about buses in North Buckinghamshire, they're not great, so I'm worried, I worried about it for a period. And I will come back with some more, but I cannot say that anything's going to be a success.
Yeah, I'm sure we're getting three minutes there, so Counselor Draper.
Um, I'd share Robin's, um, concerns wholeheartedly about, um, what did she say about the library. The one thing I wanted to question in the report, um, it says it, where is the total project to library service in twenty quarters to twenty five? I imagine that's across the whole of Buckinghamshire? Where it says the staff costs about three million. And so the library service was being required to save five hundred thousand pounds over three years. Is that the library service across the whole of Buckinghamshire? So surely, they would not need to cut services, the amount they're cutting. If they're talking about reducing that amount over three years, because all of the libraries in Buckinghamshire, I feel that this is, to use John's phrase earlier, using the stretch of the killer act. I feel there are probably much better ways of saving that money, um, and I feel quite cynically possibly that this is just another step towards completely automated libraries or just closing them all together. And I think we should do everything we can as a council to do what's right for our community, keep our library open and keep the staff in our library so they can help the people that need it.
Thank you. Counselor Maudie.
Well, just to say, Counselor Drake, I don't know that many libraries left now, we've cut most of them. Uh, Buckingham Library is one of the best libraries in Buckinghamshire. And it's not just about books, there's access during the day, there are lots of events, if they even announce as one. Their dementia, um, and they have, uh, Alzheimer's in there. It it is a well-used library, I should also declare, I'm trying to be the friend of a library. Having said all that, uh, but, but, yeah, as the friend, we, we support, um, the library one hundred percent. And we are keeping a very close eye on it. And what does concern me is the right of that, well, the, the access you can get out of ours. And the security aspects, it seems a bit odd that you can just like allow somebody come in uh, and take a book out, so I don't know about it. And I sometimes wonder whether they know enough about it.
Counselor, please.
Thank you, um, I can't find the exact bit in the report right now. But, um, I'm sure I read somewhere that it was going to cost five hundred fifty, or over five hundred thousand pounds to, um, to, to implement this scheme in order to save five hundred fifty five thousand pounds. Yeah. It does seem to be as, as like to.
Three years, it's going to.
Yeah, over three years, so it does, yeah, it's, it seems, it seems like, um, putting the putting the cart before the horse, really, um, there should be a better way of, um, being able to fund the service rather than making cuts to it.
Thank you, Counselor Ossie, Bob.
Well, thank you very much, and I mean, I'll just rise to say that what's been proposed here is a different approach to the library, um, I don't think it's an intention to close the library, which I've been said today. Um, I also heard discussions around resets and where savings could have been made. I think, looking at what's been proposed here, it's going to be a proper consultation, I do agree with the recommendation for the town council to put its views forward. And also for members to do the same, um, I believe the residents would also make their comments on this proposal to see if it's something they like or not. And all this will be taken into consideration to find out if the proposal will still, still run off, so, um, I don't see anywhere in the proposal that has been made to shut down the library. So I think our library is being used currently as a workspace by the council, so it does provide a lot of services aside from just library services, and I'm not, or I'm not aware of any intention share councils close any library at all.
Well, so I'm losing slightly track of, but I think it was Counselor Donnie, Counselor Paul, Counselor, um, Ahmed and then Counselor Harvey in that order, um, I thought.
Thank you, ma'am, um, what their option about using volunteers reminds me very much um, about the model that they did with our youth centre, is they, they caused the management committee become, um, a limited company and hire staff. So that they, they took their hands off of a service, a valued service in the town, and said, oh, the community can run it. And, and that's what I fear here is that they're, they're doing the same, so the community can run it. Yeah, just send them call.
Thank you, ma'am, yeah, I just, I'm not, I'm not sure, that's not the best way of making a proposal, or.
Yes, I, 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 I must recommend that.
Yeah, well, in that case, I'll second it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, but I've still, will it, Counselor Ahmed, or, or Counselor speak, Counselor. Yeah, I was just going to reiterate what, uh, Counselor Maudie says, the library is so much more than just taking out a book and bringing it back, you know, as you mentioned, baby fans, my own children have been going to various baby toddler infant events throughout their childhood at Buckingham Library, and there's a couple of things in the report which just makes me think, you know, we're referred to as customers, whereas they should be referred to as the community, the residents or the community, we're not customers, you know. There are so many functions to our library and everything the staff do, and secondly, in regards to getting volunteers in, I mean, this is just a system, I guess it's the same way as food banks operate, you don't pay enough. So people have to rely on these things, you're taking away jobs and getting volunteers in. And my final point is that the automated system might be fine for taking a book out and bringing it back in, but for any prob any person who has any sort of problem, you know, whether it's visual impairment or anything like that, an automated system just simply doesn't work, and a lot of elderly people like to go to somewhere like a library, speak to someone. It, it just won't work in a community like this. Counselor Harvey.
Yeah, I think we're already having a workshop now. And that's the other thing, because probably, probably he will be able to make that workshop, and obviously I just want to bring a couple of thoughts. One is, of course, libraries thought a lot more about than just books, we know that, we've all been in there, we know it's it's a community hub, um, and the notion that it can be somehow roboticised um, is, is, is ludicrous, because you can't, people need to speak to people and not some sort of under the screen, that's, um, and I would commend people to read the, the, the report. Um, because Robin mentions to me, I look through the report, read the equality impact.
Yes.
It makes chilling reading, seriously chilling reading, about basically all the coozies that are going to suffer with the proposals that we're now seeing starting, let's be clear. Consultations are a bit late in that respect, um, and of course, it's only going to cost five hundred thousand pounds. Because we all know contracts like this never go up, do they? They only ever stay at the level that you agree that, and the IT consultants don't go back and say, oh, by the way, we have this other thing that's come along, that's going to cost another two hundred K, oh yeah, and there's this other bit too, that's another two hundred K, and so it goes on, yeah? So the notion's only cost five hundred, yeah, right, we'll take that on the venture through it. Um, access to knowledge and information is fundamental, fundamental to our working to most. To start pairing that back is anti-democratic, let's be very clear on that. Pair that, people's access to information, ideas and so on, is fundamentally anti-democratic. We must resist this in every possible way. And I would also add, that I heard today, that my suggestion that we, that we had a petition on the Buckinghamshire Council website titled, we need people and not robots running our libraries, or something like that, um, has been refused. Because we're having a consultation, therefore we don't need a petition. Now, mind you, democracy has various emotional aspects to it. The notion, uh, the, 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 the consultation is all that's required. And we know about consultations, they give you a set questions you've got to respond with. Maybe some people simply want to say, no, I'm against this, and that's absolutely right, people would just express opposition to the general drift, but that's been refused, so another example of the anti-democratic way in which Buckinghamshire Council is choosing to work with the library. Closing our libraries, even pairing them back, is anti-democratic, as is saying no to a petition that is very politely phrased.
Thank you, I will allow two more comments, but I think then we can go on to the vote because it's after all fairly straightforward recommendation, Counselor Stachbury and then Counselor Draper.
Just for your information, the moment I asked the Cabinet meeting finished, I went straight up to the Service Director, so I didn't demand a conversation. Because I read, um, that Harvey said the impact assessment, and I was chipped. I also did have a meeting with officers during the, um, interlude between, um, the election. Using words, um, and I met officers and I met them all and discussed this with them, and then I said to them, would you answer my questions, which has, I presume they haven't got back to me, but these things are ever present and they need to be in the public domain. That's why I wrote the question to Cabinet, because I have no other option, elected member, than to answer the question. I listen constantly to the opinion assess, as you absolutely right about the vulnerability to people that use these libraries. And I listen to you around here, I think that we need to have an amendment to the proposal that we have, but at this point, though we will meet it, we are against the changes. I think we should register that we're against the change for the very reasons that it's been cited by members of this council about the vulnerabilities and the impact assessment readings. And I think if we don't do that, we are not being open about, I think as I proposed the amendment, that we say we are against it. But we will need to discuss the outcomes of it and formulate a response, but we're against it because it is not in our public interest that this changes. As, as obvious as, access to knowledge is access to, to your rights. And people go down there and solve their own problems, otherwise they'll probably end up at the C A B, you've probably overworked and haven't got any time either. So, and a product that isn't meant to wrong foot you by saying that, Jane, it's just the reality.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I propose that we write that, and I'll get this to the proposers as they stay in the report to Cabinet. Noting the impact assessment recommendations or the appalled's impacts. Because to say it else, at least draw their attention to that, that they may do some work on it afterwards.
Thank you. So just to be very clear, your proposed amendment would be something like that this council opposes the changes to the library and, um, resolves to establish a single meeting, working group to, uh, delegate the letter or the writing of the letter, is that your amendment? The letter or the writing of the letter. Is that your amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. A second bit, yeah, okay.
Um, just another quick point. I know that it says one of their other rationales. Their, their main selling point is that, oh, it allows us to stay longer for people, um, studying for exams. But we have a university for people in further education and I know that the Royal Latin Library stays open. Fairly late, probably to about seven, eight o'clock. So there are other resources that people can use. That wouldn't be dependent on any of the star plus library and having seen the work they do. Yeah, I, yeah, okay.
Just one last thing. We felt that motion is agreed, I suppose we do press release.
I think we should have a working group first and we always do a press release on that one. You know, one final word to Council Osipogun.
Yes, I would probably say that the. Proposed amendment then you stop for part of the meeting. Because if we're getting predetermined what that means to determine. It'll be unfair if people are going to see that meter. I think we should leave it to the people at the meter to decide what position they want to take. So that there's a robust discussion around what, what's, what's.
Yeah, okay, that's a point. I mean, another search for a council, yes.
I mean, you say good point, but if you want to, um, be in favor of the closures or against the closures as they are. You're in favor of the equality impact system, it takes away people's rights and the fact that they are being disenfranchised or you're against it. I'm saying we're against the impact test because the impact system states clearly in it that those very vulnerable groups which. Were being eloquently cited are affected. So, so that's where we're going with it. We go down the road saying, oh, we'll wait for that. I think we can be against it in its proposal. That doesn't stop any more conclusions and discussions about which elements are really long that we want them to improve. Anyone who's involved in Buckinghamshire consultation knows that the consultation takes place and that it's implemented regardless of the consultation. I think that could be the elements that we've seen. So, um, so, um. You know, we can vote on it. It's been seconded and I propose we meet in place.
Tiny performance from Council Davies and then we'll move to the vote on the amendment.
I agree with Council Rosie Bagum. I, I think that, um, that the, um, setting up of a one. One meeting working, working group to, um, bring together the comments of this, um, council. Um, is the way to go on it. To write in advance of, of that meeting is, is as, um. Council Rosie Bagum says predetermined, um, the, um. The outcome of that meeting. So I would, I would go, I would not be in favor of Council Stutchbury's, um, amendment.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, um, whilst it's entitled members to decide. The Clark's, um, recommendation that the working group establishes a formal response.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Council General. It's one tiny comment, but of course, if there's any evidence that the Citizens' Vice Bureau can provide, I'm sure we'd be happy to do so. Let us move to the vote. So we have had a proposed amendment and it's been seconded. So. All those in favor of that particular amendment.
Please just ask who seconded the amendment.
But it's a recorded vote is requested. So. Just, Paula, can you read out what the amendment says again? So we know what the working group.
That this council opposes the changes to the library and resolves to establish a single working group to create a formal response to consultation.
Whereas the original recommendation is to rec, is recommended that a single meeting working group is established and delegated to write. The town council's formal response to the consultation. Yes.
Firstly, I think I ought to declare an interest in abstaining because I'm friends, treasure of the friends. But secondly, I don't think, uh, you should prejudge the decisions of the working group. And a report to be read first and considered by the working group, rather than putting words into their mouth by objecting.
Thank you. So we now know, I think it should be clear in everybody's head what the amendment is. A recorded vote has been requested. All those in favor of the amendment. So that is Council Harvey, Council Draken, Council Ahmed, Council Mahi and Council Stutchbury. All those against the amendment. That is Council Donahue, Council Cole, Council Gayley, Council Davies, Council Jane Maudy, Council Osipogun. Council Ralph, Council Troy and Council Schaefer. And those abstaining please, that's Council Howard Maudy. Thereby, the amendment is not carried. So we now move on to a vote for the original recommendation. Which is the first, I will take those separately. I think. It is recommended that a single meeting working group is established and delegated to write the town council's formal response to the consultation. And I think I should add, it doesn't say in here that anybody is precluded from being on that working group. Yeah, so, uh, all those in favor of this recommendation and that is now unanimous. No, it was the extension from, uh, Council Howard Maudy. Sorry, my apologies. It is fair to recommend, so thank you. That is, uh, the recommendation one point one carried. Recommendation one point two, it is recommended that members read the attached report from Buckinghamshire Council and consider responding. To the consultation in an individual capacity, not the quickest speaking, we need to vote on this. So we have noted that, if I think. Voting on it one way or the other will still not make any difference. Thank you for that. Again, this was a, it's been an important discussion. And aired a lot of issues. I think we will, um, ask the officers to set up a or to, um. Propose meeting, a meeting date and then anybody who wants.
Invite members.
Yeah, all members will be invited to be part of that working group. Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, as I pointed here, some people around here are actually in full-time employment. So I think that, that, um, needs to be, um, accounted for that because otherwise you're actually disenfranchising members of this council. Who are in full-time employment, uh, who are in full-time employment. So I think that meeting has to be a time that people who are employed can attend it. Otherwise, we're actually doing exactly what they're doing in the impact assessment and the study is cutting people out. So I think that we should make sure that we make that meeting available to people who work.
And also to recognize it's not just daytime work. Okay, so to fac, facilitate those right, uh, um. A, uh, participation as is humanly possible.
I was just going to say, building on what Robert says, maybe a gap Monday.
Sunday morning, no. Right, let me move on to the next agenda item, please, and which is to look at the action report. Are there comments or questions arising from that?
No.
There too.
Yeah, okay, it's another thing. Thank you. To note or receive a list of events attended by the mayor and deputy mayor and for some strange reason. That is relatively sparse this time round as well. I should also like to add that I attended to celebrate Buckingham Day. You did not actually do anything in a formal capacity. I was just there. So I'm not in fact sure this council's a formal. Mayor or engagement, but I was there and said. No, I didn't actually wear the chain. Other, yes, that's ladies.
Um, I would say that the same for, um, the girl guiding event because I was in the kitchen all day for ten hours. Feeding, feeding the guides and brownies, um, yeah.
Formerly open Buckingham Live.
I did, I did. There's no record of it.
I would like to, uh, yes, another.
That's a minor thing. Um, more on that formatting. I mean, from twenty one twenty two, it says bank signatories at the top of the action list.
I think we have done that, yes.
No, 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 no. It's got it on page for the action list. I don't know why. Yeah, well, either way.
That's a signature, right, so back to the.
Hope so.
It's a gremlin.
Okay, so the date of the next meeting is in this case, the next full council meeting is on Monday, the sixteenth of September. And the next interim council is Monday, the fourteenth of October. I, there, propose, yes.
I'm just going to say, sorry, um, it's looking like we haven't got a spare Monday. Until the twelfth of August.
Um. And the consultant first closes before that.
Yeah, so I think we need to look at another, another date and time.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you. That's. Can I therefore, no, I'm doing to close this meeting. Yeah, we propose in, you know, can I propose that we go into private session. Agrees on closing this meeting.